Good evening, everyone. It's a little past 7:30, so I think we will get started in our meeting tonight. This is our Green Team meeting. The Green Team meeting is the meeting of the Committee on the Environment and the City Council. This was put in place a number of years ago when we adopted the Sustainability Plan, and we had Gina Mathias come on as our Sustainability Manager. The purpose of the Green Team is to maintain and grow Tacoma Park's role as a sustainable community and make sure that we put in place and we follow through on our sustainability action items. So we meet together at least once a year, and this is the second, I believe, the second time we're meeting in this type of format. So in the past, it used to be members of the Green Team would come to a regular council meeting and sort of do a presentation from the podium, and there'd be a little bit back and forth. Last year, we changed things a bit to have this more discussion style so that, I don't know, we could have a bit more back and forth and discussion regarding the Committee on the Environment's priorities and how they match up with the City Council priorities. And so, thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. We thought we would first start, because I know the Committee on the Environment has some new members, and we have some new council members, so why don't we start with introductions and go around the room? You can start over here.
My name is Jeff Bogart.
Yeah, okay.
Ward two.
I'm Kirsten State. I'm on Ward four.
John Ackley, Ward two. I share the same power lines as Cindy.
Our sympathies.
If you want, and when you speak, if you could push the buttons on the microphones, yeah.
Sharon Cohen, Ward three.
I'm Satjivani Klaikasa, Ward two, and co-chair. Looking for another co-chair.
I'm Suzanne Ludlow, City Manager.
I'm Cindy Dibella, Councilmember, Ward two.
Kate Stewart, Mayor.
Terry Siemens, Ward four.
Talisha Circe, Ward six.
Casey Kostick, Ward three.
Jason Danwerber, Deputy City Manager.
Darrell Braithwaite, Public Works Director.
Gina Mathias, Sustainability Manager.
Marty Itner, Ward five.
Jeff Short, Ward four.
Paul Krstaski, Ward one.
Helen Galband, Ward three.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So we have an agenda this evening. I think everyone should have a copy of it. The purpose of our meeting, as I said before, is to discuss updating the joint Green Team priorities and to identify specific areas in which the Committee on the Environment can help the City Council. And tonight, their recommended Green Team actions are approve or revise the updated Green Team priorities and identify two to three specific shared areas for joint action. And so our first item of this evening is to turn it over to our Sustainability Manager to give us an update on sustainability and other environmental efforts by the city in the past year.
Great. Thank you, Kate. The Green Team's purpose is, fulfills our need for one of the requirements of being Sustainable Maryland certified. We have to convene this meeting. And in 2018, or 2017, in October, we were recertified. This is our second time earning Sustainable Maryland certification, and we were named Sustainability Champion of the Year, which is great, with 650 points, which is, from my recollection, at least 150 points more than the next community down from us. So we did outstanding, and in your packet of information is an outline of all of the actions we earned points for and how many points we earned in that category. And I attempted to align it with the draft priority areas for the Green Team, and it can serve as a good foundation for the conversation of what priority areas the Green Team is interested in pursuing over the next year and tell you what actions have already been taken and what needs to be done further or where we can take some more action. I'm going to focus primarily on our big point items to highlight for you. I generally specialize in energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reductions for the city, and Darrell Braithwaite, the Director of Public Works, can talk about stormwater programs and on their sustainability-related programs as questions come up. So first, we earned a lot of our points in innovative demonstration projects. That means, say, we did something above and beyond what Sustainable Maryland would consider a normal sustainability-related action. We earned points for our Neighborhood Energy Challenge and our Car Free Challenge. And I'll take a step back. This is over a three-year period, so this is not just the past year, it's the past three years of sustainability actions that earned our certification. Our biggest point item came in energy efficiency, not surprising, for innovative demonstration projects that covered our solar co-op participation and increasing solar installations citywide, our LED streetlight pilot projects and conversions, the solar crosswalk light pilot project, purchasing wind racks to cover more than 100% of city operations, and the solar that is on this building and Public Works. So that earned us 50 points. We earned points for upgrades we've made to city facilities, including Hefner Park, this building, and the Recreation Center. We earned points for the Neighborhood Energy Challenge in several different categories, including residential energy efficiency, innovative projects, and several other further down the list. The Georgetown University Energy Prize earned us 20 points, again, for innovative demonstration projects. We've already completed our greenhouse gas inventory. We've done it several times. This year, we're doing an update, but it did earn us 15 points for having a community-wide inventory, as well as a municipal footprint. They gave us points for doing both, so that's 30 points combined. We earned a lot of points in health and wellness, which is not exactly greenhouse gas emission reductions, but it's still sustainability, especially when we look at our New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center gym and the bikes that we've installed throughout the city for residents and for staff. So the bike share expansion and pilot projects have earned us a lot of points for this project for Sustainable Maryland. Our curbside composting, the kilowatt smackdown, small business energy efficiency competition, and the county green business certification, since we have a couple of local businesses certified, all earned us points. And I'm going to skip down past some of these because I think we're all very familiar with a lot of our ordinances and laws in the city regarding purchasing and recycling. Our Safe Grow Law, yard waste collection and mulch, and the Urban Forestry Program earned us points in the natural resources category. And lastly, I want to highlight all of the points we earned for planning and land use. I think it's great that the Ethan Allen Gateway Streetscape Project and the Flower Avenue Project earned us 30 points in land use for innovative demonstration projects. That is a really broad overview. We earned 650 points, so there is a lot of detail that I skipped over for your benefit. But if anybody wants the detail, I have the full report here. This is what I submitted to Sustainable Maryland Certified, so if you'd like a copy, you can grab one after the meeting, or I can pass them around to you now. Also in your packet is the sustainability-related budget items. This is, again, just a select snapshot of what we are spending on sustainability in the city, specifically energy efficiency, greenhouse gas reduction strategies, and storm water, and food waste, and our urban tree canopy program. You'll see in fiscal year 18, we budgeted $15,000 for interns to assist in outreach, public education, and general administrative support to public works staff, and we plan to increase that just slightly for fiscal year 19. I plan to use interns for public outreach in the 100% renewable energy campaign we'll be launching and the new challenge that will kick off in fiscal year 19, whatever that happens to be. The stormwater management project budget is also seeing a slight increase, and I will let Darrell go over stormwater in just one moment and what programs that will entail. The plantings for the bulk buy, or the budget for the bulk buy, will stay the same, as will curbside food waste collection program, and our special events program is going to stay the same for next year. The budget for energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction strategies is the same, but money is being moved slightly to adjust for new programming interests and to satisfy the needs that we see in the community. We had a lot of money in the budget for fiscal year 18 for low-income-to-moderate-income energy efficiency projects for single-family homeowners to match a grant we earned from the Maryland Energy Administration. We earned a $90,000 grant, and from prior year's experience, we learned that in order to qualify homeowners for that grant money, we had to put some money up from the city to cover safety and health and wellness issues inside the home and to cover things that the strict parameters of the Maryland Energy Administration wouldn't allow. Doing that helped us qualify. Everyone who applied could participate this year. The first year we earned the grant, only 50% of the homes could participate, so that worked out really well. We completed all of the homes. Tomorrow is our compliance monitoring visit, and we'll close out the grant for this cycle. Next year, we're going to shift focus heavily to multifamily energy efficiency. This is a big need in the city, is to help our multifamily buildings improve living conditions, have a higher quality of life for the people living in the buildings, and also control their utility expenses, or outrageous. The buildings are old and in need of improvements, and that will have a big impact on our greenhouse gas inventory. So that is where you see a big budget shift for next year in those programs. Do we have any questions based on all of that?
So this is fiscal 18 proposed?
Yes, proposed.
Gina, thank you. Sorry I was late. How much money, can you remind us that the city put in for the, I guess, matching funds for the single-family homes' energy efficiency?
It was $42,000 total.
And some buildings have third parties that collect the utility payments, they do the billing. How would you suggest that we could work with them to make utilities more efficient? If it's not going through directly to the landlord, it's going through a third party.
We'll have to work with the third party, too, I think, in that case.
Okay. And Essex House has this situation. They're using a firm called Studer Baker, and it's just been one problem after another.
Yeah, we can look at their contract terms, if it's time for them to go out to bid for a new contract, see what options they have.
Because there may be firms that, you know, have a mission statement or priorities in, you know, energy efficiency. I think that might be a better route than going, you know, just collecting money and pretending you're a utility, but you aren't actually a utility.
But, yes.
Thank you.
Gina, could you say a little bit more about the Climate Resiliency Plan?
Yes. So that is a requirement for the Compact of Mayors, which is now the Global Covenant of Mayors that we signed, the mayor signed, in 2015, I believe, that was signed. And it is a, it's a requirement that the city has a resiliency risk hazard, a risk hazard map and a climate resiliency plan. And the $5,000 is for a preliminary plan. I believe a full-scale resiliency plan will be a large undertaking, similar to what the Sustainable Energy Action Plan was. So this budget item is meant to satisfy the covenant before going into a large-scale planning process.
Great. And continue.
Darrell, do you want to talk about stormwater?
Sure. I think there's a couple other items that you have in, that were attached to the budget. I know that there is interest in the kind of solid waste management programs of the city, so there was a chart that just compared past few years of trash and recycling and yard waste programs. The city operates its own collection service for single-family homes and small apartment buildings. We pick up from about 3,800 households in the city. Things have remained fairly constant over the past few years in terms of the percentage of waste that we pick up and dispose in various ways. A little less than half is trash, a little more than half is compost or recycling or yard waste programs. There's been slight increases as the participation in the food waste program, which was started three years ago now, has kicked off. As with most new programs, what we found years ago when we started the recycling program, nothing different in the food waste program, is your processing facilities and capability is key, and that really drives the rest of the program. So your end, your end user, your, who's going to handle it and manage it, enables you to establish a program, first of all, and we can't really grow our program more. We haven't taken a more aggressive and promotional kind of approach yet with food waste because we're still limited to the amount of tonnage that we can take to what, where we currently take it, which is the Prince George's County compost facility run by the Maryland Energy Service. They have indicated that they're planning an expansion, so we're hopeful that that situation will resolve itself in the not-too-distant future. At this point, we're capped at a certain tonnage per week, so we fit within that four tons a week, but it's limited our ability to expand it beyond. So right now, we're sort of in a holding pattern. It's a very successful program. It's really, people love it, those that participate in it, but we really haven't done the door-knock and push out the program yet until our processing capacity is nailed down. And one of the things you'll see, you know, people that watch the stuff really intimately, our waste stream is changing. You know, any of you that could think back 10 years ago, there's just not that many glass bottles in the trash anymore unless it's wine bottles, you know, or liquor bottles. The sodas and the food waste, food products are really coming in more and more plastic paper and metal cans. The plus part of that is the lightness and weight, both for manufacturing, shipping, and their sales, but also on our end, it just, it sometimes skews the numbers, so it looks like our recycling numbers are going down, but it probably is more a reflection of the changing, changing types of containers that are in the marketplace and being used. But you'll see on that chart, the numbers have stayed fairly consistent. We have a popular program with very high participation rates. You know, the participation rates of these programs in the city are higher than most jurisdictions because of the interest, I think, people have in the programs and the support of the programs, so those programs just carry on. The other piece of information that I brought, and it gets a little bit more into the weeds, is the stormwater information. And there's a couple of documents that I'll refer you to. One is the upcoming next year stormwater request.
Before we leave waste, can I ask a question about
Sure.
... participation rates in food waste program? Is it about a quarter of the residents, 10% of the residents?
Just about half. We're about 1,600 households participating in the 3,800 households we service. A little less than half.
Can I just?
There are some multifamily that do, but it's a smaller multifamily building, so it's really motivated folks that do so.
And I had a fellow question on that, too. I know this is, these are the numbers for the past three years when we had the food waste collection, but did we see a substantial decrease in trash with the increase in the food waste?
Just that portion that you see now as food waste used to be picked up as trash. Yeah, yeah, so it tracked, you know, pretty consistently. I don't think there's anything else I wanted to make sure to say on our solid waste programs.
Is there any estimate at all that you would want to repeat about when a new facility might come online?
You know, I haven't had a conversation with the Prince George's County staff for quite a while, so I don't know where they are in it. We signed a letter of interest and intent saying that if you build it, we will come. And that was probably a year or more ago, so I don't know where they are in the process, but we can look, we can certainly reach out to them and find out if things are still on track at the county facility. Terms of stormwater management, again, we have a stormwater management page on the city's website, which is probably, if you want detailed information, a good place to go if you really want to get down into the details. The kind of information I brought, I thought, would just be helpful for sort of painting a picture. The biggest change in our programs is last year, the council approved a rate increase, and we did a presentation that basically spelled out what those funds were needed for, and it's driven by a number of factors, one of which is our mandate by the federal government and state government to meet certain pollution reduction requirements related to stormwater management. And so we are well on our way to working on that, but I think what we, what we saw after, I think we've been really focused on this since 2004, really, but not, not creating the bioretention facilities and infiltration facilities. Those have come online in the last, say, five or six years. And so what we've been able to take away from that is that, at our current rate, prior to the rate increase, we weren't going to, we weren't going to meet the mandated requirements for treatment capacity. And that's for a program like ours that is, I mean, I wouldn't say mature. We're not, we're not in the baby phase. We're probably in the teenage years, you know? We've had a bunch of years at it. We have some experience at it, and so we've been, you know, identifying ways that we find more success in terms of getting pollution removal credits through the program. But we, it's a pretty aggressive program. We need to treat 20% of the areas that currently don't receive stormwater treatment. So basically, that's 20% of your impervious areas need to have, have a form of stormwater capture and pollution removal to meet the requirements. And for us, that's, you know, basically the equivalent of treating 97 acres, I believe, of impervious area. So that information in more detail is, again, on the website. The presentation that we put forward to the council last year is a pretty informative way of kind of tracking where we are and where we're going, or where we think we'd like to go. The other information I included here was just our next year's budget request, which tracks pretty similarly with last year's. There are, there are capital projects, as well as just our overall personnel costs and maintenance and services costs that we, that we do, some of which we're required to do, like water quality testing. Others, we have been doing for quite a while, just for best management practices, is the video inspection of our lines so that we know what's going on underground and can identify problems before they happen, or identify problems that have already happened that we need to fix. So that page just kind of lays out, and again, this is pre-council approval, so this is, you're just seeing the presentation that we're going to be put together. It may change once the budget is, is approved by the council, but it basically shows you a starting point. The other thing that I brought along is sort of our five-year plan, actually, it might even be six-year plan, for both capital projects as well as major system repairs and improvement. So you can kind of see what we're planning. The purpose of this is just to identify the project, as well as identify what treatment credit we think we're going to get from those projects. So that's the information. That's sort of more the spreadsheet format that was included in the, in the attachments to this agenda item. So that's pretty much all I, I had to say. There's a couple of things I wanted to point out. We had intended to have a rate study structure, and we'll be coming to you Wednesday night. We put out an RFP. And so we are making a recommendation for a contractor award for the company to come in, and basically, we haven't evaluated our impervious area since CH2M Hill established it for the city's stormwater utility fee when it was created. So basically, back then, they were using aerial maps, and they, they were using tax records, and, you know, the work was good at the time, but now we have much more sophisticated tools to use, including LiDAR and other types of information, to, to take a look again at what our average impervious area is for single-family homes, and then also use that to create the base rate that we use to charge commercial and institutional facilities based on their impervious area. So they'll be evaluating the actual impervious area for single-family homes, doing both, using both the technology, GIS, aerial maps, LiDAR, as well as doing some field reality testing of about 200 homes just to capture that information. So that'll be giving us a kind of a refreshed look at our base unit and our impervious area assumptions about the single-family homes. And then the proposal that we received also has the capacity for some add-on studies if we choose to do so, things like credit programs, developing a credit program, which I know is of interest that we've heard about for years, as well as looking at a tiered rate structure to see if we've got enough difference in the average single-family home analysis to warrant a tiered structure for, for single-family residents. So that's going to be upcoming, and we hope to have that study done. I can't remember now how many weeks, but seven or eight. So once we get the council approval, then we'll move forward on that. We're anxious to see that. It's, it's been a long time coming, so we're, we're hopeful to get that information.
Great. Any questions? Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Darrell. Can you give us, on the capital improvement program that you have, can you give us a little preview for the Ward five projects, the one on Kennebec and Houston Avenue?
In which year?
Kennebec is FY '20, and Houston is FY '23.
Well, again, kind of learning curve. One of the things, when we first started out, we were creating infiltration basins and bioretention facilities, those planted garden areas. We have a little, I think we have 53 currently in the city. We have also been exploring, and the county is kind of ahead of us on this, a product, you know, there's a variety of different manufacturers, but one that's called Filterra, which is basically, looks kind of like a stormwater inlet with a tree grown out of it. And they tend to have, they're more cost-effective in terms of treatment credit for stormwater management, and they have some ability to better manage and control the first flush, which is the type of most polluted water that you're trying to get, and focus it into the medium where it can do the filtration. So Kennebec Avenue was identified as a, as a quite a bit of impervious area, where, you know, one of the things that we're doing with the Flower Avenue Green Street Project is we're, you know, creating stormwater infrastructure there, but we also realize that all those streets slope down to Sligo Creek Parkway. So over the past, as well as up here in the future, we're looking to focus on those areas adjacent to Long Branch and Sligo Creek so we can treat the stormwater that's flowing directly from our streets into those, into the stream there. So the Kennebec Avenue is a proposed couple of Filterras, which will capture stormwater right along the existing infrastructure. So basically, an inlet will be expanded, and there'll be a Filterra added to provide treatment, so it won't change the current functioning of the stormwater. treatment, so it won't change the current functioning of the stormwater. It'll basically be using the existing infrastructure, but trying to treat and capture some before it goes out into the creek. And let's see, where else have I got?
Houston.
Houston would be the same kind of thing. We have had a couple of facilities on Roanoke. We've got facilities on Wabash, so this is just adding to those. So the Houston Avenue would be, again, a similar type of proposal, where we would be using Filterra or capture facilities to treat.
And so do you anticipate these facilities to be mid-block of Kennebec and at the end of the Kennebec, so?
They probably, they will be located near existing inlets. So wherever they are, we go beside them with the Filterra units.
Okay, all right. And one other question. With the rate increase in the stormwater management fee, does that keep us, as a leader in stormwater management, in Montgomery County and the state?
Well, in terms of the rate structure, what we were recently informed is that we're kind of on the low end of stormwater rates currently. So, for instance, City of Rockville has a much higher stormwater rate than us. One of the companies that we hope to award the contract to for our impervious area does a nationwide stormwater rate study, and so we'll be getting their most recent study to sort of see where we fit in the midst of stormwater utilities. So, you know, every jurisdiction is trying to reach that 20% goal, so we're all hunkered down and moving forward. And one of the things, you know, depending on where you are and what your topography is and what your land is, I mean, for areas like Tacoma Park that are pretty well built out, we don't have some of the low-hanging fruit that other jurisdictions have. One of the things that you'll find when meeting with our peers in other cities and park and planning is they're really focused on stream restoration, which is a great thing, because it gives you quite a bit of credit for stormwater treatment. We don't have that many stream channels in Tacoma Park that aren't owned by Park and Planning, so Park and Planning says, "Thank you very much. We'll do our stream restoration and get the credit. If you guys want to do one of your little tributaries, that's cool." But we are also working with Park and Planning on a major project at Tacoma Branch, so we're very hopeful for that, and we're just in the development stages now. It is kind of, there are a couple of areas where we have storm channels that are basically streamed. Circle Woods is one. Behind Baltimore Avenue is another. And Tacoma Branch down in the Sligo Mill, Poplar Mill area, just to the west of New Hampshire Avenue is the third.
All right, thank you.
Great. Any committee on the environment?
This very detailed plan stretches out for many years. Is there any sense in trying to front-end any of this by accessing some funding ahead of time?
Well, our biggest issue is staff capacity. So this program that we've laid out is very aggressive, just in terms of our own ability to manage the projects and keep them moving, both the design element, as well as the construction element. So we are pedaling as fast as we can. If we were to front-end something, we would have to have the management and construction oversight and project development piece of it as well. It would almost be like we have to contract with a design-build type of arrangement, where they could develop the design, oversee the construction, and basically hand you the keys at the end. We haven't looked into that in terms of companies available to do that. Certainly something we can look at.
So no overtime for Ali in early retirement?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The construction manager and the city engineer don't get overtime.
I'm just thinking that, you know, it's all laid out.
They're salary positions.
We're just delaying the time that we get the benefit from it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's a very good point. You know, we, for instance, at Tacoma Branch project, we've been trying to get that off the ground for five years or so. Some of it was the big cost implications. We've been farming around for grant money for several years. Nima Upade and my staff has been quite successful at capturing grant money for projects, but has been unable to get this one going, because we need to have the design developed first. So we're hopeful that we can get some grant funding for that project, but it's a bit of a chicken/egg thing.
All right. Well, seeing other questions, thank you for the presentation. And now, we're going to talk about, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Dibala to provide the city council perspectives on environmental sustainability within our current priorities. And I should note, actually, before Councilwoman Dibala goes, is that I think in the future, our ideal thing would be to meet as a green team before the council retreats in January, before we have the priorities. But given the elections, that was difficult to do. So just to give that context.
Yeah, given that three of us wouldn't have been sitting here. But never mind that. So what I want to do is to, since the point of this meeting is to talk about the overarching environmental priorities. I want to talk about what we've got, what we, this council, has got down now for this next year or two, and compare it a little bit to what the previous council had. So just to put it in context, the council has five overriding goals, and three of them have to do with community, two with government. The three that have to do with community, environmental sustainability is one of them. A livable community and community development are the three community-based goals. So right away, depending on your point of view, environmental sustainability is in the mix, for sure. And then last year, within that, the city council had three goals under environmental sustainability: energy efficiency, renewable energy, and tree canopy. And to make a very long and wonderful presentation on results short, the city did pretty well in moving forward on energy efficiency and renewables, and for a whole bunch of reasons, not as much progress on tree canopy. So, and through this year, and what this group's proposed to do is to collapse the energy and renewables goals into community sustainability, and then to also have the tree canopy goal once again. So it looks like this. Everybody has this. And then within that, there are some strategies proposed. So within the continuing to be a leader in community sustainability, we have three strategies. The first one's on energy efficiency, with a focus, as Gina said, on multifamily. The second is on renewable energy, with a focus on solar and wind, as Gina said. And the third one is looking at how environmental sustainability will intersect with the work that the council's going to do on housing and economic development this year. Come to the tree canopy, looks a lot like last year, tree canopy goal, reviewing the tree ordinance to make it more user-friendly, and at the same time, not to affect tree canopy health adversely. And that's reflected in another section of the plan, which is the engaged government section. We're looking at three processes that the city has for sidewalk, for traffic calming, and for trees, and what, in all three of those, can be done to make them more user-friendly and to make them better for the city and the residents to walk through. I want to point out one other thing before we open it up, and that is just that there's a fairly long list of existing projects and initiatives, ongoing activities, as part of this. So what we thought was, rather than repeat things that are obviously priorities, because we've been working on them already, we just had them listed, like, yes, of course, this city is going to continue to work on meeting its stormwater permitting requirement, et cetera. So we didn't reflect them in the goals. The goals are, like, on top of that. So having said all that, I think I'm done for now. Questions, comments?
Terrific. Any, yeah, Paul?
Well, Chris, I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward on tree canopies, because as you know, Cindy, I've been pushing this for close to 10 years at this point. Really would like to see something get done. And I know that Public Works has commissioned a new study on the canopy, so we're all anxiously awaiting the results of that study. I would also like to throw out, though, I think that there's something else that we might want to consider in this one. I know you can't do these, these priorities are done, but as we move forward, we have three extremely large development projects that are either occurring or will occur in the city. And of course, that's the city-owned lot at the junction, it's Montgomery College, and it's whatever's going to happen to WAP. All of these things are likely to have major environmental impacts. And I'm not talking about the impacts after something is established. You know, we recognize that, for example, the developer at the junction is proposing LEED gold certification. That's going to be fairly green. But during the construction process of all these, we're going to have a lot of environmental impacts. These will be stormwater, things we've already talked about today, stormwater, these will be greenhouse gas emissions, air pollution, noise pollution, et cetera. And I would like the council and the committee, I'm being off the committee after June because of term limits, but the rest of you here, to consider doing something about looking at the environmental impacts of these development projects, and ensuring that there are no mitigatable impacts that we're allowing to occur in these three projects.
Great. Any other comments or thoughts?
Since Paul raised this issue, I just wanted to, since we've got a group of interested people here involved in this issue, we had gotten a proposal from Jarlith, I can't remember his last name, to do the evaluation of tree canopy using the LiDAR data. We've had several LiDAR runs ourself over time, 2009, 2014, and working out the details with him the last, I think, two weeks ago, we found out that there, either the state or Park and Planning is planning a new LiDAR data, like the latest, greatest data that will be available in June. And so our plan was to get Jarlith going in, actually, it was February and March, and then we hoped to have a community seminar in April, where we had him there and everybody interested to talk about the data, and then work with us to kind of come up with a tree canopy goal, based on what his findings were and the historical information that he was going to be comparing. He strongly recommends that we wait till we get the June data. I guess as data heads go, you know, more data, better data, newer data. So we've sort of sat back, and now it appears that we're going to take that recommendation and delay the tree canopy analysis until, I believe it's Park and Planning completes their work. So we're hoping early June that data would be available, which would then make his part, like a July-August, with a September focus for a community discussion on the results and the tree canopy recommendations for that. So since you'd raised it, I just wanted to let people know that we're likely to delay that until the fall, instead of the spring.
Councilmember Simmons?
Darrell, are we sure that the county is going to include Tacoma Park in their study?
Yeah, we've gotten confirmation from the folks that are in for the work.
Good question.
Yeah.
They did in the last one, Councilwoman Simmons. The county commissioned that, and we've run, and they had a very nice word-by-word breakdown that we could use. And I think you may recall, last year, I discussed with you the discrepancy between our wards. Some wards do not have the advantage of a good tree canopy. Other wards have a lot of canopy. I think the important thing, Darrell, I'm glad, I hope this is finally going to get resolved, because we are really in need of a metric that we can measure our canopy against. And I hope that, you know, I'm glad you're continuing to speak with him. You know, I've spoken with him myself. I know he's the guru of us all in tree canopy, so we defer to his judgment, certainly, on this. But as you recall, the past two studies use different LiDAR resolutions, and I think what we need is something where we can compare to the previous studies. And I know that some members of the Tree Commission and other interested parties have been concerned about differentiating between a so-called canopy tree, as it's defined in our ordinance, and the overall concept of tree canopy, which can include understory trees. So if we can make both of those kind of differentiations in this, I think that would be very useful. But thanks for doing all this.
John?
Yeah, this is a question for you, Kate, but the whole council. To what extent is the council interested in setting more specific guidelines for greenhouse gas reductions, like a lot of cities have? A lot of cities have a goal of a 50% reduction by a certain date, or even 100%. And Kate, I know you signed on to that one Sierra Club thing, which is, I think, 100%. But in a lot of those towns and cities are going through a real planning process to get there, and making sure you're meeting deadlines. So I'm wondering if that's something that this council is interested in doing, is really setting targets and developing a plan to meet them.
Great. John, I would say, from my perspective, that comes in the discussion later between the Committee on the Environment and the council. Because I would also like to hear, given the other priorities that the Committee on the Environment has put forward, what your all recommendation is vis-à-vis the other priorities we've had put forward so far. Like, you're correct that we did, I did talk to the city staff before we signed on to the Sierra Club. It was a compact, I can't, I lose track of what everyone calls these different things, pledge, and it was in line with what we are currently doing. But if we want to put that as a priority, I think that would be a conversation that we would have with the Committee on the Environment and the city staff, to say that is going to be one of our priorities, because I do think, then, that in terms of what the Committee on the Environment's working on and what the city staff's capacity is, that's the conversation we have to have.
Yeah, very much. And I know Gina's already doing a lot of the heavy lifting on this with the RFP for wind power, so that homes and businesses can sign up, which is like a big chunk of it. And I think Peter is very interested in this, too, and I know he's down here tonight.
Yeah, I was just about to say that. And the point of the discussion period is to discuss this, but I'll just say that, from my perspective, as I understand it, what we've been doing is we had the Sustainable Energy Action Plan, which has things you're supposed to do, and that has an implied percentage reduction in greenhouse gas emissions. But as far as setting a target in the way that you're talking about, we haven't done it. We've been sort of working by reference, if you will.
Yeah, Gina?
I can confirm that's correct. In the Sustainable Energy Action Plan, the city states that it supports the regional reduction goals, the state reduction goals, and the county reduction goals, which are all worded slightly differently. But the city chose to not set a specific target, but rather to support and to do everything we can. The plan also does not set out specific target years or benchmarking years. I was thinking that, coming up in fiscal year 19, it is time for us to update the Sustainable Energy Action Plan, because we have made tremendous progress. So it may be a good time to look at that.
And I just want to go back to something Paul said, that the council priorities have not been adopted yet, actually, by the city council. And we wanted to make sure that we got this meeting in before they were adopted. So if we want to have that conversation of, you know, doing that, that's exactly why we're here tonight, so. But I guess maybe we, unless there's something specific about what has currently been put forward as the city council priorities, then we're going to move to the previous, a review of the previous Green Team priorities. And then we'll open it up for conversation.
Yep. All right. The chair of the Committee on the Environment.
Co-chair.
Co-chair.
I'm having a little shoulder and back issues today, so if I do this, I'm not asking to speak anymore. So we've got 30 minutes here, and I only provided a one-page summary, which I have more details here, just as Gina also provided more details if we need. I'm happy to see a lot of consensus already. I was pretty much going to skip to the bottom of this document here and review the current proposed list. There are a couple notes on it, which I think we're already going to try to change. And I mostly want to recognize that, coming out of the council retreat and priorities, we pretty much have the first tier covered, and haven't spoken much to any of the other ones. And that's pretty much how I think it should be, in terms of being sure not to just say we want to do everything on everything. We have existing programs that do waste management and stormwater management. But I do want to acknowledge anything that is down on the list, and make sure that we are okay with it staying there. The biggest thing, that maybe it's not even listed here, is Paul's comment that development projects are not very specifically addressed. They could be subsumed under any of those other categories. But from a perspective of, now is the time when money's being spent. of now is the time when money is being spent and infrastructure is being built, you want to focus on that a little more specifically as it's happening or right before it's happening, as opposed to trying to address it after. So we'll go down here. As Gina and others have mentioned, the Energy Efficiency Program is kind of morphing from the single-family focus, even though that will still be continued as an ongoing program into the more multifamily and/or commercial and municipal efforts. I'm going to just say quickly and pause a little bit in case there's some questions or thoughts on each one. I don't know if I have more details to say about each one unless people want to ask about it. We've kind of covered a lot of these already. For renewable energy, we've got an exciting new campaign to engage people voluntarily sign up for renewable energy on their home energy bills, along with some other new state programs around solar farms and people who can figure out how to do renewable energy even if their house is not suited for it or their apartment building or the tree canopy above their house doesn't work. I'm excited that it feels like that priority is already in action and will have a strong focus for the next year. So urban tree canopy, that's the first kind of change from what was proposed here. We'd kind of been talking about it moving down and somewhat needing to take a lower priority since that's how it's been happening the past year, but acknowledging that we had a new urban forest manager hired, and then we have this new county LiDAR data coming, and that it's a affirmed strategy from the council retreat to keep the tree canopy as a high priority. I'm going to rescind or propose that we rescind this idea to move it down. And there's also the idea of putting in the ordinance update, which I think will be probably a good practice and timely thing to happen, but will cause headaches in large meetings with lots of comments. And just something to be aware of that that priority will take a lot of effort.
We appreciate that awareness.
So I'm going to pause there to see if there's any comments on the first tier priorities before moving, moving down the list. So for second tier priorities, I see, and Darrell can speak more to this, waste management is fairly well established and pretty steady and has some goals waiting for other facilities to open up and opportunities to present themselves. And we haven't, as a council or as a committee, kind of tried to push that we want to set new goals or get 75% alternative waste diversion or, or anything like that. So there are some ideas about, you know, reducing smaller campaigns, getting restaurants to stop using plastic straws, and some citizen efforts have come a little bit to the committee, but we haven't done a lot of our own effort on them to help with the styrofoam adoption and other projects. I don't have anything else to say about the waste management now. Yes?
Something I, I wanted to raise was that our trash now is currently going to landfills, as I understand it. The council and members of committee should be aware of the fact that landfills are responsible for greater amounts of greenhouse gas generation than other methods of trash disposal such as waste energy facilities. And I would think that this might be something to look into in the future. If we are going to adopt greenhouse gas reduction goals, we need to look at more than energy sources. We need to look at other causes of greenhouse gases, such as our waste management. I recognize from, from Darrell, that there is a cost benefit here and far be it from me to say we should spend extra money, but it's something in the council's purview to weigh these types of things.
Yeah, and I just, I didn't, I echo your comments, Paul. I think it's a very good thing to take a look at and, and keep in our mind. We really have largely been driven on an economic analysis basis, you know, less tip fee, lower tip fee, you know, saving the city money. How far away is the facility? How long does it take us to drive there? So there's some greenhouse gas implications on either side. The other piece that I just want to throw out, if the city were to really want to get into waste management, in my opinion, the vehicle to get you there is to look at our fee structure for trash collection. And if you really want to motivate and change behavior, looking at a, they call it pay-as-you-throw or pay, you know, pay-type arrangements where you pay based on the amount of trash you generate. We'd raised this issue over a decade ago with the council and Montgomery County was looking to do a pilot program back then. It just became a little politically difficult because there are other issues that you raise as, with anything, you know, the impact on larger families or multi-generational families within the house, you know, so you have to kind of weigh, again, everything's got sort of...
An increase in illegal dumping is another big one.
Yeah, that, that tends to be more of a fear than an actual reality. For the most part, people are, you know, law-abiding citizens, but it, it could certainly happen. But anyway, I just want to put it out there. If you really want to look at waste management, the communities that have taken this on tend to have a, you know, different size can approach and different rate structure for the amount of trash that you generate.
Thank you, Mayor. I wonder, I know that some businesses are working towards zero trash, and I wondered if the committee had looked at any ideas on maybe advocating for programs with our businesses in that direction.
I'll say it's probably taken a third tier priority in our own actions. A lot of the committee's work is either driven by a council request, citizen request, or our own internal motivation, and it has not come up strongly. I think some members have an interest in waste management and zero waste, but we have not addressed it formally.
So for purposes of tonight, the question is whether all or part of these waste management questions should rise a little higher? Is that, or sink a little lower if the case may be on, on the priority list?
Yeah, I think...
It might, it might be useful to, you know, straw vote with everybody in the room. Raise up or raise down or keep the same.
I think the last time we met, the way we did it was after you went through all of them to then kind of, so that we're not voting on something before you are able to discuss something else.
Sure.
If that makes sense.
That's fine.
Because somebody may decide later on something else is more interesting to them and they wouldn't have voted the same way if they had to. So I think, why, why don't we step through all of it and then we can go back?
Any more on waste management before we move on? All right. This energy efficiency for single-family residential is not fully second tier, other than that it was a primary focus and now it's not so much. We've already spoken about it. Transportation, as it relates to greenhouse gas reductions and potentially quality of life issues has, you know, had some attention, especially with our most recent car-free challenge and electric vehicle infrastructure upgrades. I don't know that it's being pushed harder either direction. It's nice to say we could make the traffic issues in Tacoma go away, but previous indicators are that it's, it's a lot of cut-through traffic that it's harder to manage even if we wanted to do it unless we were trying to kind of push traffic to other roads. But it still, it's around. Again, don't have much to say on this, on the lower tier ones.
Can I ask a quick question?
Mm-hmm.
Did you guys look at autonomous cars with respect to transportation? Because I'm on the National League of Cities Transportation Infrastructure Service Committee, and there are a number of bills in Congress now that are going to make it much easier for companies to test autonomous cars. So it is coming and it's coming quickly.
We have not addressed it.
Shouldn't volunteer.
I'm trying. I'm trying. All right. But it's something you might want to consider.
Any other comments on transportation?
I guess I would just like to mention something. We're currently, I guess, there's a county that's doing their dockless bike share process, and we'll hear some information at some point on how their pilot's going. But one of the things that I'm looking at is ways that we can use some of our asphalt of our streets as parking corrals for dockless bikes. So it's a way to continue to encourage people to use these bikes, but not necessarily have them in the middle of sidewalks, on people's lawns, or on handicap ramps. And so parking spaces, that kind of thing that could function as a, as a location for bikes is something I'm looking at to, you know, to try to encourage the fewer use of cars.
If there's no more on transportation, I'll move, move along. I want to comment that the next two items say integrated national resources. And on a previous Green Team meeting, we loved that term and maybe overused it. Our last Committee on the Environment meeting, or a recent one, we decided to, or it was, it was suggested that we may stop using it or not, not lean on it as a catch-all that would integrate so many things. So potential more editorial change could be to move those off of that, off this list. And then in terms of the topic itself, stormwater, as Darrell said, it's going very strongly and is mandated and is funded and keeps getting updated and refined as we get closer to whatever deadlines the mandates carry with them. So as the committee has not addressed it as while it's important and actions are already happening on it, it's not something that we're trying to do more on or push harder. Comments there? I guess we've heard enough on that one. On stormwater, yes?
Can I just say something, which is both Councilmember Kova and I are interested in something that Darrell referred to earlier, which is whether we can justify developing incentives for stormwater actions on private property, either singly, individually, or together, a group of residents. It's something I would like to personally work on, dependent on the results of the numbers. Just put that out there.
Because I'm at the bottom of the hill.
So moving on to water quality, as the committee, we've thought this is too low on the list. And for a while, we've been talking about the Brett Shear's Run watershed and, which as Paul says, comes as over 50% of Tacoma Park, kind of drains into this area and then comes out into Sligo Creek down by Maple Avenue and the Parkway. And it's, there's a mystery there to explore. And we've proposed some pilot studies and received some go-ahead, small go-ahead funding from the council in the past. It requires more attention in order to make some progress on it and potentially a follow-up study with a little bit more funding. And of course, coordination upstream and with other partners, both in the county and Friends of Sligo Creek. It also seemed to be something that could be more of a poster child type of project where it's something people can put their hands on. It's not faraway greenhouse gas, climate change related. It's, you know, can I play in the creek today kind of questions. And Councilmember Tim Mail, previously former council member, got it onto this list, I think at our previous meeting. And it hasn't gone too far, and there's, there's proposals to bring this up. So that's on the list of maybe vote to change that.
And do you have a budget number? Or how much more money?
Roughly, we've talked previously about having a $5,000 initial pilot study project, which would integrate, involve some volunteer managers and a bunch of water quality testing. And then based on that, escalating up to a $25,000 follow-up study and, you know, all pending like what can be discerned about what's happening, where sources of pollution are coming from, and, you know, potentially some solutions after that. And then I think, who knows what beyond that is any kind of implementation or, I don't know if it's coordinating with the stormwater plans or, there's, there's probably a whole bunch of different interventions or implementation ideas. But it's much, it's very much a mystery and a study at the point, at this point.
Okay.
So would you see if this was moved up $5,000 in this year's budget and then see what that brought and then come back to see what?
Probably, probably no. We try to cash in on the $5,000 approved as an executive amount earlier.
So this was discussed two years ago, or at least a year ago, and then somehow it never came to pass. And then there have been requests like, well, do we have that $5,000 to do this? And I have the authority to do that. I have asked for a description of what is needed to be done so that I could see if that's the right amount and if it makes sense. And so I've not received that yet.
Okay.
I still think that, you know, depending on what I see in the scope, I think I could find the $5,000. It's just the, it's just, is that something that we can do and is that appropriate for this? I am also very interested in knowing kind of what, what that follow-up study would be and, you know, so I just, I need more information. I don't, I haven't, I've only received inquiries and not a lot of information. Thank you.
So as a kind of proposed timeline schedule, it's trying to work with the initial $5,000 sooner than later and maybe proposing in this year's budget, oh, sorry, the budget for the coming year, the follow-up, which would be dependent on the first one, but could be sketched out at least a little better so it can feel like a solid budget item. Combined with Paul, who's being our ringleader on it, not being involved soon, makes a little bit of a conundrum. We haven't had someone on the committee beyond Marty who is doing at least a little bit of fill-in, but I'm not sure it's a long-term commitment to, you know, own this project. That would, you know, so we're, you know, it's a question about can, can we, we have a desire to elevate it, but maybe not the personnel or the funding to, to make sure something happens.
Yeah, if I may interject, I think Suzanne, one of the reasons why you, you haven't seen the details is I know Marty has been working very hard on pulling things together. And as Satyevan mentioned, it's really a matter of, we have to leverage a lot of different resources here. The amounts of money that we're talking about are not nearly sufficient to pull this kind of a project off. But if we can leverage a lot of existing resources, which include the Friends of Sligo Creek and my volunteer labor, for example, and some others with some contacts that I have, we can probably pull this thing off. But it's a matter of pulling it together and, you know, Marty has been working on that. We've been talking, I know that there was a meeting with Darrell and there's been a lot of discussion. We haven't quite got down to this thing of refining who, what the roles are going to be. I fully intend to stay involved as a member of Friends of Sligo Creek, if not on the Committee on the Environment, because this, of course, is what I got my doctorate in. So I could probably help a little bit on this. But I fully intend to be involved and Friends of Sligo Creek are firmly committed to pursuing this as an entity. So, you know, I think something's going to be forthcoming fairly soon. I know Marty's busy on some other things, but...
Marty's very committed to making this happen. I just want to get something that's coherent for you, Suzanne. And we, we've had a phone call with Darrell and we've already figured out there's been some duplication of efforts between Friends of Sligo Creek and the City of Tacoma Park. So I see my role as connecting the dots. And I also see Brett Shear's Run as an opportunity because it's our tributary in Tacoma Park and most residents... because it's our tributary in Tacoma Park, and most residents don't even know that it exists, and we're actually, you know, sitting on top of it right now. And many of the outfalls and stormwater drain things on the street drain into Brett Shear's Run, so I have a lot of ideas about an outreach program to make sure that residents know about Brett Shear's. And it's also a source of illicit discharges, chronic illicit discharges. So we know that this is a place where pollution comes into Sligo Creek, and we own it. So I am passionate about making something happen there. And if you go and walk down, and just, I challenge every one of you to go walk down behind Essex House Apartments buildings and look down in there, it is a mess. It's a mess. It's been a mess for as long as I've lived here, and I would love to see some stream restoration. I'd love to see the trash out of there. There's ducks, little wood ducks that like to hang out there, and it breaks my heart to see them down there with the green water and the trash and all that. So I'm going to be bird dogging this one.
And I just wanted to add, we had, what I thought was a really helpful phone conference with folks that Marty put together. We can really envision this as kind of a pilot project that could be replicated well outside the city, everywhere, if you, you know, get all the various pieces working together. So there's definitely a lot of cohesiveness between her vision and what we're doing, and what other resources can bring to bear on it.
If there's no more to discuss there, I want to try to move a little faster, because we're running out of time. Open space. There was a lot of energy on this project, both from former staff member Erkan Ozberg and former committee member Lauren, oh, forgotten her last name, Lauren. And it has, has fallen by the wayside. Two primary movers stopped working on it, and as an environmental issue, I think it's pretty top, it can have a big impact, and as a city priority around livable communities, it could also have a much larger impact, especially when it looks at kind of the social justice aspects of, you know, we've got it, like the tree canopy, we've kind of got it in pockets and don't have it in other places. There hasn't, we're not proposing to bring it up, as we don't think we, we don't hear that we have staff capacity or committee capacity to bring it up, but it may be one to consider.
There is funding in the CIP, I think, next year and a couple of years out, for open space plan overseen by the Planning Office.
Right, and this is something that we brought up before, that we probably need at least another position in planning.
So, can you just say, so for the people who are new here, the plan was essentially started?
The plan started, there's a lot of good work, and I think it's a really important thing to have done for us as a community, but putting it into a coherent, into a coherent document to come to council, that's a ways off, because we've been short-staffed.
The last item written here is, I think, a bit of a catch-all. But, you know, it's asking us to just ask ourselves questions, what is the impact on the environment of, you know, things we're doing, or is there an opportunity to coordinate something together at the same time? I think the open space kind of has that natural fit there, in terms of looking at some of the community sustainability and, you know, human livability issues that would coordinate with a stronger environmental or cleaner environmental experience in Tacoma.
And on that one, the item that is the Housing and Economic Development Strategic Plan, and the point that the council has put in your priorities to really look at the environmental impacts and aspects of that, is something that has been specifically called out for this draft priorities document.
And I guess I would ask the Committee on the Environment, do you want to add here for consideration setting greenhouse gas target reduction, target, wait, target number for greenhouse gas reduction for our consideration?
It felt like earlier that Gina had acknowledged that we might be overdue for the Sustainable Energy Action Plan update, and that it would be part of that, which I would subsume under the Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy Priorities. It's a specific action item. I did hear that. It didn't, it didn't sound like a different priority, it just sounded like, make sure it happens underneath.
Underneath that one.
Existing ones. The new one that I'll repeat now is Paul's point about development projects.
That was the next one I had on my list. Yep. Yes.
The Transportation and Carbon Emissions Reduction as a second-tier priority. I don't know if you could sort of shift it around, so that we're looking at carbon emissions reduction as a first-tier priority, that includes many ways of arriving at that, which is the goal.
Oh, you don't, don't hold your button up.
Oh, sorry. Maybe I broke it. So the goal is carbon emissions reduction, and if these other ways of arriving at it, so why isn't that, could we look at that as a first-tier priority, and then that could include, you know, waste management, that would obviously... Include energy efficiency.
Thank you.
And renewable energy. Is that something that we could shift around? So it could, so it would include, you know, things that we might have yet to come up with also, to arrive at that final goal.
I might venture to clarify that that second part of that phrase there was probably to focus the transportation efforts on carbon emissions reductions.
Right.
It's not really meant to be two, two in one, it's that, let's look at transportation, specifically in the greenhouse gas context, as opposed to a livability context or a walkability, even though, of course, they're totally integrated, as an integrated national resource, maybe. That could be a proposal as well.
Yeah, I guess, the question is to look at carbon emissions reduction as the overarching goal, and something that could include many actions to arrive at that goal.
Great. John?
I mean, in other, I'm very, I like to think in terms of goal-oriented, and maybe a goal would be to see, get half of Tacoma Park to sign up for wind power. Both as a way to really motivate our town, I mean, I think we need, you know, motivational goals to engage people, and to commit ourselves, so that we can measure our progress, and if we don't make it, keep going until we do.
So are you suggesting having that under the energy efficiency, or as a separate standalone priority?
Yeah, under energy, under energy efficiency, yeah.
Renewable.
I'm sorry, renewable, yeah.
You know, one of the problems with the GALL, and I'm a big fan of GALLs, but when we initially embarked on this enterprise, with the first audit that we had, what the Brendel Group came up with was the startling conclusion that we have some of the lowest greenhouse gas emissions per capita of anybody in the United States. And this is not a great incentive for people to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions, because, in fact, I had one of my neighbors say to me, well, we're already doing so well, why do we need to do anything more? But, you know, your idea of having substance-oriented goals rather than numerical goals might help with that, like getting half the people signed up to a renewable energy source, or getting rid of half of gasoline-powered cars, things like that. And that way, we wouldn't be dealing with these numbers of how many pounds per day CO2 equivalent somebody is emitting.
When I'm looking at what we're talking about, where we're setting priorities, so there aren't discrete goals in the priorities. It's a priority area, and the discrete goals are sort of separate from the priority tiers.
Great. So I'm going to review what I've heard so far. So the first-tier priorities were energy efficiency, and then, just as a, kind of a note underneath that, putting the, the setting of greenhouse gas target reduction, as Gina talked about that, is something that's already sort of planned out in the thinking of looking at the sustainability report again, or strategies. The next is renewable energy, and the urban tree canopy. Moving down to the second-tier priority is what we have now, waste management. We had some interesting ideas of exploring further, some future things we could do, strategies on waste management, energy efficiency, transportation and carbon emissions reduction. We had the idea of actually pulling out the carbon emissions reduction as an overarching goal. Then we had stormwater, water quality, and the conversation we had regarding how to start that work. Open space, the environmental aspects, and the integrating our environmental goals with other priorities that we have in the city. And then the other one we added was environmental impact during development projects. So I think we could spend maybe the next 10 or 15 minutes, and then we're going to go a little over tonight. The way we did this the last time that I thought worked, but Saty, tell me if you, if other people disagree on the Committee on the Environment, is we sort of did, we discussed and then did a hand count, and then the Committee on the Environment, you all went back, looked at it one more time, and then brought it back to the city council, and we adopted it by resolution. So you can, we can change our minds, I guess is what I'm saying, after tonight's conversation, if, after we think about what we want to set as the first-tier, second-tier, and third-tier priorities, before the council adopts these in a resolution. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay. So I think one of the ways to structure this conversation, I want to go back to pulling out the carbon emissions reduction as an overarching goal, since it's a big thing to do, and see if we could spend a few minutes on how people are feeling about that. And think about that. Councilmember Devall?
Yeah, I know I'm supposed to say I want to set carbon emissions goals, but the last time I looked at this was Peter, when we did the renewables resolution, we ran into it again, which is that there's a whole bunch of different percentages that are out there. Most of them don't have a lot of backup that would show how they got these numbers. And I actually am more comfortable with, these are the steps we're taking, and one of the steps would be this year to look at the renewing the Sustainable Energy Action Plan, do it that way. Look at what's, what's possible and practical, and where that gets us carbon emission-wise, rather than the other way around. That's, that's how I'm feeling about it right now.
Yeah, it's something to think about, you know, we're really doing very well on the energy aspects of greenhouse gases, and that's really thanks to Gina and all the resources the city has poured into this. And we're going to be continuing to do that. But I think we need to look at some of the other sources of greenhouse gases, and I hate to be controversial, you who know me, I know I'm never like that, but I think we have to recognize that I would bet in Tacoma Park that eating meat and dairy products is responsible for more greenhouse gases than use of energy in single-family homes, for example. So I think if we really want to tackle this subject, we need to do it honestly, in a holistic fashion.
Unfortunately...
Getting some support from over there?
Unfortunately, meat eating is not included in the community protocol for greenhouse gas accounting, as much as I wish it was, as a 25-year vegetarian. I think setting a goal for greenhouse gas emissions, on one hand, is great, we need a goal, and having a goal gives us a mission, and a strong mission drives action. However, when I look at communities that have set goals recently, such as 100% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, people are left saying, well, how are we going to do that? Are we going to invest billions of dollars in removing the natural gas infrastructure of the city? I mean, there are extreme limitations on what we can achieve. So if we do set a goal, it will have to be unique, and it'll have to be our own, and not just jumping onto what's been set by on the jurisdictions around us, I think.
Any other thoughts on, do you want to speak more? I took, I took your suggestion slightly differently, so, because I took it as sort of a rethinking on some of these priorities, and pulling out carbon emissions reduction, and not necessarily setting specific goals, but rather, these are the priority, and what goes underneath that. That I heard you say. Yeah.
What you said was helpful, and I think my concern was that it would be, that you would be limiting discussion over the next year, or before the next time we update this, on other things that we have, other to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, which is the ultimate goal. So if we're just, if we're limiting our, to these things that we're already doing well, we're already discussing a lot, are there other things we could be doing that would be even more powerful to achieve that end goal? And I just wanted to make sure there was a, even, you know, a way to talk about those things, or if they're just going to be dismissed because they're not a priority.
I think one reason some of these were originally drawn out was to provide some focus, so that the category is not too broad, since we can't do everything. I think it is good to look at it in terms of carbon emissions overall, I do like that, but I think that was, originally it was done this way.
And I just say, thinking about it tonight, I like that idea of reconceptualizing this, and I think it's one that if the committee considers, and as you all are reviewing this, and can come back to with a recommendation, that would be great. Let's see, so let's take on the first-tier priorities, putting this conversation, putting a pin in the conversation we just had, are there, is there anyone who would like to put forward changing the first-tier priorities, the three items we have now, areas, the three buckets we have now?
I, you know, I, I just really don't see why we're separating our residential, single-family residential from other structures here. If we do something like implement the, you know, buying 100% wind power, I would merge that with the energy-efficient, single-family residential category with the other, and just make it one category on energy efficiency.
I was just curious why it says, Paul, you know, is this moving on?
That was on the urban canopy, and the reason I suggested it, because Darryl already has it firmly in hand, that I didn't think it needed to be a high priority, a focus of either the council or the committee, unless she slips off the rails, then of course, you know, we'll, we'll ask Darryl to come back and explain it, but it seemed like it was already working.
Just because it is a high priority doesn't mean it shouldn't remain there.
And I think, given the timeline that Darryl has outlined, it would probably be, it's a good idea, I would recommend that we keep it as a top-tier priority. And the amount of time it's going to take for council and staff, and the committee on the environment, to work on this in the next year.
And the Tree Commission.
And the Tree Commission, yes.
Can I ask, if the Tree Commission has any comments on any of this?
You will...
On, did it come up through a microphone?
Yeah, you have to do a microphone.
On the, on the different priorities.
Well, I guess I'm not prepared to talk about the priorities in general, but yes, I'm definitely in favor of keeping the urban tree canopy as a top priority, and I do expect that the Tree Commission will have a lot of input in discussion, both of revising the tree ordinance, and on many, well, on the numerous proposals for expanding the tree canopy, both on private property and on public property. So, yeah, so...
Great. And Gina, I don't know if you wanted to speak at all to... And Gina, I don't know if you wanted to speak at all to the, I can't remember why we broke it out a year or two ago of putting it back together, the energy efficiency.
It's the same comment from before, it's to provide focus area. So with the energy efficiency, we've done an incredible amount with single-family and there was the desire to focus more on multifamily and commercial energy efficiency in that year.
Moving down, I think the other area, I don't mean to skip anything, but I think the other area that we discussed was the possibility of moving water quality up. Any thoughts on that? I will say that I think it should be higher than the third tier priority and explore what Marty's putting together and what can get done with possibly a $5,000 budget and more. But until we, from my perspective, until it's flushed out more, I'm not sure I would move it to a first tier priority, given the other priorities we've discussed this evening. So.
If I could just do a quick thing about the energy efficiency, perhaps the thing to do on the, on the first tier priority, put energy efficiency and then in parentheses, especially multifamily and commercial, but, and then you can just take out the single-family residential out of the second because it, it would be incorporated. So that may make things just feel a little bit easier as you're talking about where water, water quality goes.
And then you opened up a space for water quality. Put it up there.
Yeah, so with respect to water quality, I'm actually really glad that you're just recommending that that be moved up because I, I think that is a, a good idea, at least a second, a second tier priority. And this actually brings up an issue that I would like to mention and that, that is the oversalting of roads in the wintertime and that has a direct effect on trees. I believe that several of my trees have, or shrubs have been killed by oversalting. Of course, I can't prove that, but there's, there seems to be a strong correlation. And I've also seen reports that indicate that national waterways are becoming saltier. So I, and this is a, a direct result of, of road salt. So I, I do think that this is an issue that we should consider with respect to water quality. So just wanted to put that out, thanks.
Thank you. Was there anything else to, that we needed, you felt like we needed to discuss to reflect? Anyone want to make any other comments regarding what would be in a second or a third tier? Yeah, nothing?
I think having the development projects goal explicitly put somewhere on this list is, has been suggested and endorsed. I'm not sure if we're proposing bumping it right into second tier or something or, or even first tier, given the timeline, but somewhere.
And by that, you mean the impacts of development and construction rather than building in lead or some other equivalent, which is, which is a very important thing also, but is different? Okay.
That, that's right, Cindy. You know, the NDC, the developer of the junction, has already committed to lead goals and we've actually individually pushing him to do even more. Montgomery College does their project, that will likely be a goal project. Montgomery College is also committed to green building. And then, of course, we don't know what's going to happen with, at Venice Hospital. We, I guess we can plan for the worst, but I think we would assume that anything that were to be built on that campus site would also meet green building specifications that are in effect at that time. So this is really the process of the construction, demolition of existing facilities, construction of new ones, until the building is up and operating.
And I'm thinking about the impacts, the purple line, and I'm thinking about New Hampshire Avenue and not just Montgomery College.
Most of the, most of the kinds of things about impacts during construction are part of codes. So a lot of this is just, is code enforcement and whether it's impact on water quality from runoff during, during construction, dust, noise, light, hot working hours, all of those kinds of things are covered by codes. I, I have a feeling there will be many people watching these things very, very closely too, so we'll hear about any violation right away. But I think, you know, it is absolutely a concern because things can happen during construction and you do have to watch. You know, I particularly would be interested on the water quality issues about the hospital site with it being right over the creek. So that's something that, to me, would require a lot of attention.
Did you want to say anything else, Cindy?
Only that, that maybe is the place to start, is what, what is already in code and is that going to cover, cover most of what people are thinking about? Maybe that's the, the way to frame up.
Yeah, I think that probably is. The, the issues with Montgomery College, which I can speak personally to, for example, one big one was the use of diesel generators during, that isn't covered by any code. It's an air pollution, it's a greenhouse gas issue. Are there alternatives that we could encourage them to use, such as a, a natural gas-powered source or solar-powered source per construction power, things like that? So that's the type of thing that comes to mind, but I agree if it's something that's already covered by code. And for example, I know that, that all these entities will have to have an urban forest management plan that our city will approve. I don't think we need to worry about that any further. There's plenty of opportunities for input on that and for working on that.
Well, maybe that's one that the committee can talk about because I think that would be one that the council would ask the committee to look at what in addition to, is already required in code, like the diesel engines that might be able to be explored with, that alternatives could be explored. So it depends also on the capacity of the committee to take on that work and, and assist us in identifying some of those examples like Paul just gave.
Sounds like a homework item.
I think it does.
But do we even have like a target of second or third tier or anything? Can we, a proposal on that?
Anything else? How's the committee feeling? Enough direction from council? Need input on any other areas? And we're not going away, so it's not like you can't come back to us.
Hi, can I just make a comment? I would just encourage you, as you're working, to maybe look for opportunities to work with other city committees as well. As we've been talking, I noticed a couple of places there could be crossover. One is the tree commission, as we talked about, but also the recreation department or the recreation committee, as you're looking at open spaces. I think the safe roadways committee is a little bit in limbo right now and doesn't have a lot of members, but as that potentially grows a little bit, that could be a place you could look at for collaboration related to transportation and emissions reductions related to that. So that might be a way to sort of collaborate and work together and also lighten your load a little bit as well, your workload. So I just encourage that.
And the youth council. So I would, they're awesome and, and meeting with them as they're looking at, they just, I think they're finishing up their survey and looking at some of the things that they're going to be undertaking over the next year or so. So there may be some overlap with them as well.
So are we going to talk to them about population growth and recreation or something?
They could. All right, well, I think if the committee feels like you've gotten enough direction to take this to the next place, then I think we're a little over, but I, any other thoughts or?
I had, could I, one thing-
Yes, go ahead, Helen.
We had had some back and forth about the, about socially-
Helen, turn on your mic.
It's, it's-
Just one time. Use both.
Yeah.
I don't know. About socially responsible investing. And I just, I know that there's a lot going on already and the city is really systematically investigating this area. And I just want to make sure that we can have input in the most useful way and notice of anything that's coming up. We'll certainly keep track of what, when it's being discussed at council meetings and all, but we're, we're very happy to provide input in, in any way that the council would find useful.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that. Good, all right. Saajee, do you have anything else or are we good?
I was just trying to look at the bullet points at the top. It said identify specific areas which committee can assist the city council or this is the second one about identifying two to three specific shared areas for joint action. I don't know, we've addressed them too much directly, but as I said before, I think the committee responds to the council, responds to citizens and does self-initiated stuff following our guidelines and our priorities. I don't know if there's anything to say over there.
Yeah, well, I would just say that I think, and I'm not sure how much, I know we sent to you, to you all last year, not as much as this year, but when bills were coming up in Annapolis to get your feedback, I, last year, you reviewed, I know, quite a few and it was very helpful in giving direction to council. I think this year, there's been fewer just because a lot of them, some of them are repeats from last year, so we already know what to do. You know, I think in future years, that might be different with different people in Annapolis after the elections. So I would just like to point out that, that I think that is one area where the committee has been very helpful to, very quickly helpful in that. So, no other? And I think the, the socially responsible banking and investing is definitely an area we'll come back to you all on. The tree canopy, the tree ordinance, I see that as a kind of a three-way, that sounds odd, the kind of a, it's getting late, a working together between the council, committee on the environment and the tree commission, really working hand in hand on that as we move it forward. And we had a lot of council discussion during our priority retreats, thanks to council member Dibala, in really thinking about how we're making sure that as we're setting the tree canopy goals and looking at the tree ordinance, that these are things that are working together and not against one another. And so that will, as you pointed out, that will require a great deal of work and so I'm sure we'll be coming back to you all on that. So, do you think they missed anything else?
Cindy brought up with the, the purple line as another development project and I know there's been some interest in some county council people in the fact that there is an equity issue here, that the purple line could be causing gentrification and basically making housing unaffordable up there. I think it might be part of what we do or what committee does in the city to ensure that there's not a matter of environmental equity associated with the purple line construction also. I think it, it behooves us to be sensitive to environmental equity with everything the city does because sometimes these things are hidden and we don't really see them. But that certainly is something that presents itself right away, is, is there going to be an unequal impact on people living near purple line construction because of environmental impacts of the construction?
If I can just mention, one of the things, certainly with the economic development and housing strategic plan, there's a lot of discussion about impact of, on housing related to the purple line. One of the things that has been a topic of the council for quite some time is that as new construction for housing takes effect, obviously we'll try to have affordable housing, but part of the way it's affordable is if the energy costs are low. And so that's also something that we, we look at to make sure that we're not having displacement and that kind of thing, that we maintain stable neighborhoods throughout our, our community. And part of that is to have the energy efficiency that's needed, that's built in. So I look forward to, as we get closer to the details on that, making sure we wrap it together very carefully.
Cool, all right. So we'll wait for you all to re-contact us and get this, we'll set a time at a council meeting and we'll probably, we may do a work session first and then a resolution.
And then we'll try to have another meeting in the fall?
Yes, and so we have the meetings in the, the ideal time is having the meetings in the fall, so that way. And ideally, in my ideal world, the city council would be meeting with each of our committees more in the fall so that we are then doing council priorities in January and then setting our budget in the spring. That's my ideal world.
Are the elections every two years?
This time, next time is going to be three years, so the next election's 2020. So I might, we may be able to get this kind of-
I don't know if Jesse can work the magic of scheduling all those committee-
I know it's hard.
-planning meetings in December.
Yes, that's the problem.
So that they don't shift around every election year.
If the council doesn't mind meeting three, four nights a week, is there a problem?
It seems to be that way lately, it does. Anyway, thank you all and I should have actually started this meeting by saying, thank you so much for your service on this committee. We value the Committee on the Environment's feedback and this partnership as a green team very much and we know all the hard work that goes into all this. The expertise that you all bring to this work is invaluable to us and I know to the partnership you have with our city staff. So thank you all very much and have a good evening.